Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the planning board meeting of Tuesday, November 22 to order at 7:03 PM. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business this evening is proposed A and R. The purpose of the plan is to combine parcel A with lot 6A on Main Street. Do we have anybody here that would like to speak to this? All right. Andy, I saw you wrote a memo in regards to this?
Not for this, for Jellystone.
Okay, all right. No, Michelle had handed, okay, yeah. Michelle had handed me something. All right. It looks fairly straightforward. Both properties will maintain the minimum required frontage and square footage. We have nobody here to respond to questions or comments, but do you have any concerns of the board?
We know exactly whereabouts Main Street this is.
It is almost across from Meadow Street, I believe. This is number 186 and 192, or 190 and 192 Main Street.
Excuse me, my wife's property now. My brother passed away.
Oh, could you, I hate to trouble you, but could you sit up in the chair here? And you just have to identify who you are. Pull that microphone over to Jibby.
My name is George Bakie. Unfortunately, my wife got her third COVID shot and she's in bed, so that's why I'm here today. September 21, about a year ago, my brother-in-law passed away, and unfortunately, he didn't leave a will, so we were in probate for close to 11 months. And ever since then, things went downhill. Pipes froze and the roof had to be replaced. My wife chose to take this section of land and add it onto ours. We live right next door, 192 Main Street. And we picked up, I think it's 20,000 square feet, all right? It's been added to our property on 192 Main Street. There's no butters. It's us. I know Mrs. Pentney lives on the other side of it, and I don't see a problem, to be honest with you.
No, no. Rebecca, I can't really read the writing. Rebecca Bakie?
Bakie.
Bakie.
You won't be the first nor the last.
She is the executor, or she has the right to sign?
My wife has, yes.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the board?
Well, we've had, is there, you said it was in probate? Was there another?
No, it's all straightened out now.
Right, was there another person that was involved?
No.
Or just her brother and her and her brother were the only?
Yep, the only heir, yep.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no further questions, the board will accept a motion in regards to the A and R for 190 and 192 Main Street in Carver. Could you be more specific? Are we going to approve or disapprove?
To approve.
A motion to approve has been made by Mr. Dion.
And I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have discussion amongst the board?
Yeah, real quick, should we make this conditional on getting a copy of the probate decision, just to make sure that we're legal and on the up and up before we register this in the?
Would that be?
I didn't hear what he said, I'm sorry.
Oh, he wants to, just to confirm the ownership of record.
A copy of the decision from the court as executor.
Oh, we have that, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't bring it with you, I'm sorry.
No, no, you don't have to bring it with you.
Understood, if we could just have, make sure that we have a copy of that before this gets filed, to make sure that everything's on the up and up.
Okay.
So you're just going to provide that to the planning board, planning department downstairs when you come to get the paperwork?
What does the, I'd have actually called again, I'm sorry.
Well, it's just to show that Rebecca has the appropriate authority.
I know what it is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the probates decision.
Yeah, I've got it, yep.
That's all. All right.
That's all I had.
Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ms. Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Everybody, I want to remind everybody, we need to keep the large copies, we have to sign them after. We need six copies, and we'll have the mylar, which we can sign after, after the meeting. You're all set. It's been approved, and when you go down to the planning department to pick up your required paperwork, you can just provide them with a copy, probate or executor.
You're good?
You are, you have a good evening, it was a pleasure. Our next order of is business is a minor modification for Jellystone Park Cranberry Acres 20 Shoestring Road. We just received Fasen O'Neill's review letter.
Updated letter.
Updated, updated letter, because I have one here.
Yes, I can clarify, if you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
At your convenience, Andy.
So what I issued this evening was our second review memo. We issued an original comment letter for this minor modification, and the applicant sent a response to comments last Thursday, and I wanted to try to sneak in a final memo before the hearing tonight. So happy to discuss any follow-up comments or concerns the board has this evening, but currently, the applicant has addressed our comments that we had on this minor modification.
Thank you. If you could please identify yourself for the record?
Andy Lyons, Fasen O'Neill, sites of engineer for the town.
Thank you, Andy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am Dan Flores with SFC Engineering, here tonight for Jellystone Cranberry Acres. I wanted to give you a quick update on what's happened since October 18. We met with the Concom October 19, and then again on November 16. We submitted a request for determination that was voted negative, so there's no need for a notice of intent or order of conditions for the work at the pool area. So Concom is all set. Mr. Lyons has stated we have addressed all comments that he had, and I just handed out a package, I just want to make sure that everyone had all the information, because I'm hoping to come out of here tonight with an approval.
Well, before we get that far?
Yep.
Because we had discussed it before, and Section 4300 of the zoning bylaws requires you to file for a special permit in regards to this, because you're going to render more than 10,000 square feet of impervious surface. Now, we had discussed it two planning board meetings ago, or three planning board meetings ago, but it's a special permit that has to be done. Because the impervious surfaces weren't on the original plan or site plan, so it's not necessarily a minor modification, it has to meet the qualifications of that special permit, which is no different than what we're doing here, but it requires a public hearing.
Interesting. Okay, I had understood that the special permit had addressed this, the one that was approved.
Now, which special permit did you request under this?
The original approval from February of this year was for the campground expansion, which included a special permit as well as site plan approval.
For usage, yes. So I believe we approved the usage of the area, but again, we can't approve 10,000 square feet of impervious surface, because I believe this is 12, over 12,000 square feet of impervious surface.
The net, I would say, is less than 10,000, because today, this is partially a pool area, as well as campsites with gravel roads and such. I believe I have some notation on that.
Because we can approve a minor modification conditional if there's more than 10,000 square feet in regards to this. If it's less, we can go with the site plan, minor modification in regards to this, but I believe you had noted there was a 10,000 or 11,000, 11,000 or 12,000 square feet increase of impervious surface.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Andy Lyons with Fasen O'Neill. I don't have the original plan set that was submitted as part of the original special permit. I do recall that the applicant called for this area to be utilized as a pool, but I don't know for certain whether or not they actually called for impervious coverage as part of that, but it was designated under the original special permit that this area would be, you know, water park pool use.
Right, we approved the usage of it, yeah, for sure. I, in the definitive plan?
If I recall correctly, there was no, there was no set design plan, they didn't have an idea, they didn't know at that time how much, what exactly it was going to look like.
Correct, and there was no design of, I guess, the site improvements for the water park itself, but I guess I'm, when I was conducting my review, it was under the understanding that the coverage of that water park area would be part of the previous special permit approval, but at the moment, I can't cite anything specific from that original review to say whether the applicant actually referenced an impervious coverage in that plan set.
I think it came up two meetings ago when we were in the basement at the time, maybe it was last meeting. But if you could give us an idea or quantify the area of impervious surface in regards to this, I thought you were adding another 11,000 square feet, that's why it got brought up a couple weeks ago. Do we have questions for the applicant from the board? Is he going to be, did he complete his presentation? Have you completed your presentation?
I'm a bit off my game at the moment.
Sorry, no, no.
Yeah, I was under the impression that the special permit was complete, that any impervious areas and such was all hashed out by the previous engineer. There was a placeholder that defined this area of the pool area, pool deck. It wasn't detailed with exact drainage and grading, but we certainly stayed within that same footprint as previously shown.
So the original special permit was for usage in regards to the water park, and it should have been noted, because it was brought up during the meeting, because I believe you went back to?
Concom.
Yes, and you should have, you should have been walked through what was necessary in regards to it, because we can accept recommendations from Concom in regards to this, and I'm expecting that they provided you with a set of conditions and an approval?
A request for determination, they voted negative, that notice of intent and order of conditions was not required for this.
Okay.
Yep.
Did they give you a recommendation in regards to the project?
To install sedimentation erosion control measures as shown on the plans. I've got the, let me get the document. All right, this states. Implement and maintain erosion sediment controls per the plan set noted in line item number one of this instrument herein under a negative determination. Basically, the work described in the request is within the buffer area as defined in the regulations, but will not alter an area subject to protection under the act. Therefore, said work does not require the filing of a notice of intent subject to the following conditions, if any.
Excellent. I'm going to ask you to, well, our planning department should have a copy of that anyways. Lights in the pool area?
No lights.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. On Fasen O'Neill's application documents, number seven, says that the applicant shall clarify who will be allowed to utilize the water park. I thought that we were only going to have the water park open to the guests of the camping sites.
Correct, and that's been added as a note, note number?
Note number seven.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand it, is the parking space for additional guests, or are you considering opening it up to the public?
Nope, we added a note to the plan stating that the water park is for campground guests only, no one from the outside is allowed, and those parking spaces are for the golf carts that are used in the campground as convenience.
Okay.
Are we going to use?
So can we probably strike that statement? It says in example, only guests staying at the campground or open to the public. That's why I got a little bit confused.
Yeah, and I addressed that by putting a note on the plan stating no outside use.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Robinson, I recall the same discussion that you do during previous meetings, that this was just going to be for guests of the park, but at the time, for this minor modification, it wasn't stated anywhere clear on the applicant's submission, so I wanted to make sure it was reiterated, and the board could include it as a condition of approval as well to solidify it in their decision.
Okay.
And I might understand that the reason you're not having lights is because it's going to close the doors?
Correct.
Okay.
Our engineer recommends adding a bike rack near the main gate, which I expect is probably going to be close to the store?
Yep, gate has been added, I'm sorry, not gate, a rack.
Okay. See that on the plan? That's to the right of the general store?
Yeah, the right of the, basically the main entrance to that area.
So is the general store open to the public?
No, that's actually a lodge, has bathrooms, an open area for people to gather.
And how do you plan to de-water and winterize the park?
The intent is to leave as much water in the pools as possible to provide some insulation. Some water will be reduced to allow basically snow storage, so it doesn't overflow, but otherwise, all mechanicals, all pressure pipes are drained, they can be drained to the, to the back, to the holding tank, and then discharged via the backwash route.
Did we upgrade the infiltration basin in regards to stabilization with stone or GeoGrid?
Yeah, there was a comment about reinforcing the road across from the discharge point with the design I originally had. Instead of that, I've added a level spreader to dissipate any flow coming out of the, out of that basin.
And Andy Lyons, that addressed my concern with the potential for concentrated discharge upgrading of the access road to the north of the water park.
Roof runoff from the existing lodge, laundry bathroom, and maintenance building?
Yep, we believe that it goes into dry wells on the southerly side. If not, our drainage calculations assume it goes into the same drainage area as we've designed, so if there are dry wells and they're operating, then they're fine.
Additional plant material added to the infiltration basin?
Yes.
To more appropriately distinguish between the water park and the management basin?
Yeah, I don't remember how we addressed that one.
I've discussed, Andy Lyons again, I discussed this with the applicant. The plan set, it wasn't depicted clearly that there was a fence underneath the slides that would provide full security separating the water park area from the infiltration area. So the applicant did revise the plan set, and I can confirm that the fence does exist underneath those slides, or proposed underneath those slides, which basically eliminated my recommendation to add more plant material to separate those two spaces. The fence is the preferred option to make sure that no guest gets confused and starts utilizing the infiltration basin as a?
Water slide, right. But you're satisfied with your concerns were addressed appropriately?
Yes, correct.
All right.
I do want to note, though, there was one waiver request by the applicant for their proposed maintenance building for window coverage. I recommend approval of the waiver for this specific building due to the building use, as well as noting that the applicant did, or is proposing some other architectural features on the building, overhang at the entrance door, some windows with a dorm window above. So I think it, the proposed building meets the intent of having some architectural features for that section of the bylaw, but making window, or adding windows for, you know, a maintenance building, I don't think is necessary in this instance.
And it's well away from the public road?
Correct.
All right. Now, we did have some conditions on this, I'm afraid Mr. Bott has those with him, and he couldn't be here with us due to particular tragedy in his family.
Just one other item, Carver Fire Department also issued an email review stating, and that's the second file in that packet, the waiver's the third file. He stated that there's no fire department-related matters, so his review is complete.
Let's see that.
That should be right after the plans.
Third page in.
Yep. I glanced over that, all right. Do you need time to confirm whether or not there's going to be less or more than 10,000 square feet of impervious surface?
I believe there is a net increase over 10,000, yes.
All right. That will require a public hearing. Unfortunately, I'm lacking my list of conditions in regards to this plan, so we will have to continue it in regards to that. I feel, and I'm just speaking my personal opinion, that at this point, that's making sure that you're just, all your bases are covered. All right. This is not a public hearing, it is a minor modification. We will be continuing this to December 13? December 13? Mr. Flores, I expect you'll be able to get to work on your public hearing application. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is there any way around this? If I could somehow cut away, if I could make a statement today that I'll get below the 10,000 square feet?
Well, you'd have to still produce site plans in regards to that, a modified site plan, so one way or the other, it'll have to go to? 13th. Our next meeting, yep. But if you, if you feel that's more appropriate, that you'd rather go that route, if you can, if you do that and confirm it through our engineer, then we should be able to proceed on that matter right away.
I'm sorry, just real quick, when I calculate my impervious, I included the pools. Usually, a pool's a black hole, it doesn't take rainwater, I mean, it takes rainwater, doesn't shed rainwater, so?
Only thing excluded is roadways.
Okay.
And that would have been off the top of my head, September 27 meeting that we had downstairs in room four, if you wanted to check on that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flores.
Thank you all.
We going to vote on the continuance, or are we just? It's a minor modification, it's not a public hearing. Oh. We don't have to vote for the continuance to a date and time certain, but December 13 at 7:00 PM is our date and time. Our next order of business is proposed draft decision of Proleo Concrete Forms, Inc. Did everybody get a chance to review it, and is it acceptable? Just go back over it real quick. Just go back over it real quick. Suitable? I'm good. Mr. Dion?
Yeah.
Mr. Robinson?
I'm fine.
All right, then, I have a copy here, we can sign that after, after the meeting is concluded. Our next order of business is, public hearing for the application of Proleal Concrete requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 5300 and 4341 of the Carver zoning bylaw, Zero Forest Street in Carver, Mass. SSZ Map 49, Lot 62-7-R, for the construction of a 7,400-square-foot building and associated driveway, parking area, and utilities. The proposed use is a craftsman-tradesman building. There will be 28,237 square feet of impervious surface in a general business zoning district. Evening, Mr. Proleal. Before we begin...
Hey, one thing, it's preolo, okay?
I'm sorry, preolo, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we begin, the board will not tolerate insulting or degrading comments.
Okay, and I won't tolerate you just ignoring...
Excuse me, are we gonna start this early, because?
Listen, listen, I don't even know what I'm here for. You got, you voted on a decision last week, what is, are we voting on another one? I don't understand this.
This is for your special permit regarding making 10,000 square feet of a lot impervious surface. It should have been done originally. It wasn't. It wasn't applied for, and it wasn't handled. We gave you a waiver in order not to have to handle it at the time of the site review. In regards to that, you're here. In regards to your special permit for rendering 10,000 square feet or more of a lot impervious surface.
I understand that. I'm, I'm still, I'm asking, what did we just? You voted on a, on a decision the last meeting. That's changed, and you, you voted...
It was conditional on approval of the special permit.
No, I'm talking about, didn't you just change the thing you voted on last week?
We just approved it among the board that, that the draft approval met the expectations of the board.
Did it change?
It has not changed.
It has not changed. Nothing's changed on that since the one you, you worded and voted on that night?
I do not believe so, no.
Okay. Why is Mr. Bott telling me you were, you had to write other stuff in, and you were changing it? And it, and it had to go through, because as far as I was concerned...
We were, we approved a draft, we had a draft decision to look at. We had to approve conditions, and then we had to draft a decision to reflect the opinions of the board.
Okay. And what are we discussing on the special permit? Is it just use, or?
The special permit takes all factors into consideration. I think myself personally have been satisfied in regards to this.
Okay. But you had two, you had, you had two, two drafts of a decision our last meeting?
We had one draft last meeting.
You had two, you had two right in front of you.
One was...
Bott wrote both of them?
Yes, Mr. Bott had a draft that he would like to propose that was not accepted by the board.
Okay.
The board went over the conditions, we went over the draft, we approved it with conditions, and that was a three-to-two vote in regards to that site plan review. Now, this is a special permit which requires a four-fifths vote. And it is also a public hearing, which allows the public to come and speak in regards to this particular site and special permit.
All right.
All right. Have any changes been made in regards to the site plan project?
I'd like to, I'd like to address the tractor-trailer thing again. It's a special permit, I, I think...
It's, it's a, no, it's, it's inclusive. We will include everything. But again, I, I must tell you that the board will not tolerate insulting or derogatory...
Asking you a question?
No, no, I'm telling, I'm just clarifying the expectations of the board in regards to this meeting as opposed to our last meeting.
And I'm, I'm explaining to you my expectations of you just to, if you have something in front of you, let people discuss it.
That's, that's the whole purpose of a public hearing.
I must have missed it the last meeting.
All right, so you have, please, the floor is yours.
Well, we've been back and forth on a site plan approval for four meetings. I've thought we're voting on it, and...
Could, could you just pull that a little closer? Thank you.
We've been back and forth on the site plan approval for this site for the last four meetings, I believe. We've left each time with, I thought, an agreement on things. Obviously, we weren't in agreement on things, but I have, my biggest issue with this site is the use. It's a rental space, it's got adequate access. We shouldn't be limiting access for trailers to that site. The, the, the impervious cover, we addressed that. It's, you've had it, you've missed it on the last four or five, so it isn't just mine. So it's going through all this process, it should be told. I mean, it's not just mine. We've got it, I offered to address that by making it gravel, and we said this was the easiest way. So we're four weeks later, and, okay, hopefully, we can get it done. But my whole issue, I only have one issue with this whole thing, and it's limiting tractor-trailers to that site. We have plenty of access. We have line of sight, everything is fine. Your engineer said it was fine. I have a rental property that you want to approve every, every use that goes in there. So anybody that comes to rent a property off me is gonna come in front of you guys, and you're gonna say you can't have a delivery by Amazon or by, you know, Cape Cod Express, because this, this site can't take tractor-trailers. That's, that's my issue. And I have one more. You asked for cross-sections on the building. We gave you a cross-section of a building with four or five doors. How we divide up the inside if somebody wants double the space and two doors in the front and not a wall going down the middle? I think that should be addressed when you go for occupancy of them sections. Because it's an open building, and it's a clear span. Your plan asks for cross-sections of the building so you can see the, that it fits the surroundings, and we gave you that. So that would be the two things I'd like to discuss.
Well, let me start by saying nobody's prohibiting deliveries from Amazon or Federal Express. And second of all, the site plan, which we are approving, we're approving to be built as. In other words, you're proposing the site plan with five different craftsmen-tradesmen buildings, which fall under certain criteria under the bylaws of the town of Carver, and we're approving it. Now, if you want, if you have a customer that needs another bay or wants to expand its space, you're more than welcome to come back to modify these plans. But these plans are important not only to the town in, in understanding what we're approving, but also to emergency services and what we're approving. If they have to walk in there, is there walls, is there no walls? They have an idea of what's going on when they go in this building. But when we approve a site plan in regards to this, we're approving it as proposed, not giving free rein for modifications. And that's why any modification to these plans has to come back before us as either a minor modification or a major modification in regards to this. Because it's happened, it's happened before, and we've learned, hopefully, from our past mistakes in regards to this.
I understand that, but we just, we discussed that. I'm not, when we, when we submit our plans, we give you a cross-section of a building. We're not showing you a layout of the inside, we're not showing you the bathrooms, we're not showing you any layout of the inside. So how that build-out gets done inside, you're saying we have to get occupancy and approval on each rental, so...
Well, we, we're just saying that, that you're building a craftsman-tradesman building, and that whoever goes in there has to meet the expectations of craftsmen-tradesmen. As you applied for it as a craftsman-tradesman, it's five bays. If you had wanted it one big bay, it might have still fallen under the craftsman-tradesman building. But then you would have to come back for a major modification to make it five different bays. But it, it also could have been considered a warehouse at that point, too. You're applying for a craftsman-tradesman, you're applying for five different units in regards to this, and that's what we approved at our site, last site plan review.
Okay.
Now, did you have further information that you would like to give to the board in regards to any of your concerns?
We've submitted all our information. And we, we gave you the turn and radiuses, we've showed you everything on the site, the driveway, all in the site. And I mean, we've, we went, and we've come back and forth about, I guess, traffic studies and this and that. And we've addressed it for the last two and a half months, and every time, we've said, yep, it's gonna be limited traffic because it's not, it's a craftsman building, people coming and going in the morning and night. So we think we're by that, and then we're back to traffic studies and what have you, so...
I, I don't think that the proposed use in regards to increase the traffic on this particular road was, was of any, of a, of particular issue to, to the board. But again, you have, you're proposing five businesses and three bays on there, and that could end up being a considerable amount of commercial traffic. And commercial traffic is loud and disruptive, and you happen to be abutting a residential district, which we have to take into account.
Like I say, I'm abutting 90% commercial in one residential house, so... And it's back 300 feet on the lot, and we're doing a fence in front of it. And the road we're on is, if I was gonna look at that road, I would consider that road more commercial than residential.
All right. Do we have any questions from the board?
If you were to, if you were to speculate as far as the amount of tractor-trailer traffic versus box truck traffic, if the tractor-trailers were approved, what would you estimate would be the percentage of tractor-trailer traffic?
I mean, deliveries come, you know, like I say, in all different ways. I mean, like I say, it's, it's hard to say. We see box trucks, we see tractor-trailers. Like I say, the tractor-trailers are usually direct ship from Cape Cod Express or Penn or one of those, and they can be coming to a little, one pallet of stuff, you know? So I mean, I, I wouldn't say that we'd be seeing 75% tractor-trailer, it would probably be 50/50. You know, I mean, that's what I would think, but that's a total guess, you know? I would think deliveries would be more on box trucks and this and that. I just, my whole problem is, isn't even really the tractor-trailers. It's the fact that anybody that I go to rent to has to come in front of you guys. And then, well, if they, if they gotta get, if they're gonna, you're gonna approve the business.
They don't have to come to us, they just have to check in with the building inspector?
But they're gonna have a determination that, okay, you can't get deliveries by a tractor-trailer?
That won't be by us, that'll be by the building inspector.
But you guys are, you guys are...
The building inspector is the one that will confirm that it is, fits within the craftsmen-tradesman definitions of the bylaws.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the deliveries. I'm not talking about, I, I understand the craftsman trade law, I mean, that's, 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 so I'm saying, the deliveries, it's gonna be in the decision. So anything that comes through there, that person has to know, here's your decision. You know, you can have this and this, you can't have tractor-trailers coming in. That ties my hands when I'm renting the property. And I mean, like I say, there's deliveries up and down that road. I mean, a tractor-trailer is, like I say, turning into a site like that is no different than a car. I mean, you know, you're, you're crawling, it isn't, it isn't harmful to anybody. So, I mean, it's really not, I think Mr. Gatsky said, like he said, somebody in a Mustang's more of a, of a problem than a, somebody in a tractor-trailer.
A Mustang is not quantifiable. Tractor-trailers are quantifiable.
How is that? A Mustang can go 90 miles an hour and wipe out 10 kids, and a tractor-trailer can be going 2 miles an hour and do the same thing.
That, that the planning board has no control over an individual's actions in regards to how they drive.
Okay, all right, so then, you can, if you're a qualified tractor-trailer driver, you can put that tractor-trailer in that site without a problem.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a statement regarding the tractor-trailer?
Please.
So, MAS DOT qualifies Forest Street as a local road. And then, a statement from MAS DOT Project Development Design Guide, "On local streets, the design might fully accommodate smaller trucks with the knowledge that, at intersections, the occasional large truck can back up while turning and can encroach upon opposing lanes. These types of decisions are situation-specific and depend on the frequency of large vehicles, the amount of other traffic, and the character of the area, and other factors." So, based on MAS DOT guidelines, it's not a uncommon occurrence on local roads for larger tractor, tractor-trailer vehicles to cross into other lanes. I guess I provided this...
Well, that's specific to intersections.
It is.
Yes.
But in, I guess, in the opinion of the Transportation Department of Fossett O'Neill, they made a recommendation to me and then to the town planner that this would be an acceptable turning movement based on the local road in proximity to the proposed curb cut at this intersection. I guess curb cut, not actually an intersection on this road. And I do know that the town has restricted tractor-trailers' access for other developments in town. Some of those developments have been not accommodating full circulation around the building, where the tractor-trailer would be able to make a full maneuver on-site. That isn't the case for this lot, where the applicant has demonstrated that the tractor-trailer would be able to loop around the back of the building and exit the property without having to back out onto the public right-of-way. So I guess, at the moment, based on the information I've received from my team at Fossett O'Neill, we're not recommending restricting tractor-trailer movements for this project, but ultimately defer to the board to make that decision.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions from the board?
I do have a question.
Please.
So when we met at the police station and we went over this, this is accepted as a 3-2 vote with the highlighted, "Truck deliveries shall be limited in box trucks." So that, we voted on this being added to the conditions?
That was in the conditions as, as we read them when we approved them at the, at the police station.
I would still stand on the fact that I did not vote for that to be added to the conditions. So that would just be my, my... So, that would just be my, my personal.
Noted.
Note.
All right. Now, the special, the site plan was only required a majority, the special permit's going to require a four-fifth vote. This is a public hearing, do we have any further questions from the board? Seeing none, is there anybody from the audience that is interested in speaking on this matter? Seeing none, now, clearly, the board had concerns, I particularly had multiple concerns in regards to tractor-trailers in regards to this. My concerns were mostly involved with the safety of the people on that road, it is a large residential neighborhood, and that, that's the particular pinch point where everybody needs to leave to go for goods and services, that there's no side sidewalk, I'm sorry, there's no sidewalk, there's no turning lanes. The disturbances and the character of the neighborhood certainly have been brought into concerns over this. The amount of traffic regarding tractor-trailers is, is, is not quantifiable by us at this Forest Street is heavily traveled by pedestrians, bicyclists, lax sidewalks, crosswalks, bike lanes, turning lanes, so there were a lot of concerns. It wasn't just specific that we want to keep a tractor-trailer out of that neighborhood, there were various other concerns, and in regards, to me, a lot of it has to do with safety and disturbances in regards to the residential area. If you would like, you're more than welcome to provide information or documentation in regards to your concerns on, on this property. I'm guessing that some were given at the last meeting but could not be accepted by the board because they were done after the close of the hearing and deliberations had occurred.
What we, all we did is provide what you asked for, for clarification when you're engineer, so we submitted what you asked to us, so you'd have.
And what was that?
That was just, I believe it was lighting, some of the buffer stuff added, whatever you asked for, we gave you.
Right, so, something in regards to intersecting turn radiuses?
I believe it was the information that Mr. Glines was just going over.
Okay.
So, Andy Glines, again, the, the last memo that Fossett O'Neill issued for this project was, I believe dated October 18th, and at that memo, we stated the applicant has satisfactorily addressed all of our concerns, but we had two notes for waivers. One was regarding bike racks, which as we understand, history working with the town, that that waiver was likely wouldn't be granted, and the applicant would be required to add a bike rack, and a waiver regarding placing the curb cut less than 75 feet from an existing curb cut, but we recommended approval of that waiver as the applicant was placing their curb cut in the center of their lot frontage, maximizing the distance from adjacent curb cuts on that side of the road, as well as lining it up with the curb cut across the street for the other commercial use on the other side.
And Mr. Bott is not in attendance, so we still have to wait for recommendations from a couple boards, so we will have to continue the public hearing.
What are, excuse me, what are we waiting for? What boards?
We haven't gotten anything from Conservation Commission, DPW, I don't believe we've gotten anything from DPW, I think we've, have we got, I thought I saw something from the Fire Department, but I'm going to have to check, but that's part of the requirements of the public hearing, is that we have to wait for all related boards to provide their recommendations in regards to this matter.
I thought when we, see, what I'm not understanding here, is this is what's confusing me, when we went through that whole thing with the 10,000 square feet, and we decided on the waivers and you'd do the special permit separate, it's formality because the site plan approval covers all the same things. So we've been going back and forth for three months, and you're telling me you don't have the board's approvals or whatever, because there is no conservation.
No, no, it's, I'm telling you that state law requires that in regards to a public hearing, we have to address the recommendations of the other boards, and we haven't, and I know CONCOM has shown an interest in this, so I, I have to expect that at some point we'll get a recommendation.
Conservation showed an interest in this?
Pardon?
Conservation has showed an interest in this?
They had some comment for me before in regards to clarifying, clarifying an issue, yes, so.
And didn't we clarify that, wasn't that?
Well, I suppose there's no conservation land in regards to this.
It's out of their jurisdiction, there's no, there's nothing.
It's just a recommend, it's just a recommendation from them.
Yep.
But I, I guess on the, just so, I, I just want to know, so I know what to tell the owner, so I can figure out where we're at with this. Two weeks ago, or whenever, the last meeting, you guys voted.
I can assure you, Mr. Proley, I would have loved to handle all this at once.
Yeah, but no, but I'm saying, what I don't understand is, when we had, Mr. Bott wrote a decision for you guys to sign, now you're signing a decision that I feel is wrong, because now you have to sign a site plan approval with the restriction on it, and then we'll go into special permit, is that going to overrule the site plan approval? Because then you're going to say, if you guys take a vote and say tractor-trailers are all right, does that, does the site plan approval, which, which, which has the weight? I don't understand.
The special permit has the weight.
Okay, so the special permit, if you guys decide to vote and you take your information, the other information, we got, the special permit is what, the site plan approval won't matter, that that says box trucks, the special permit will be the side因factor on what goes in and out of it.
Well, that would, we would, we would have to make it conditional to, to remove, we would specifically have to remove that from the site plan.
So you would remove that from the site plan?
We would have to specifically remove that from the site plan.
Okay.
And, and if it's a question of clarification, Mr. Bott doesn't write the decisions, he, he provides draft decisions based on.
Right.
What the board has discussed during the meetings and the public hearings for us to review, and as you saw earlier tonight, that we did review it, the board found it was within acceptance for them, so we will be signing that later this evening, but.
But when, when I met with Bott, Mr. Bott, when this was all going on between the last two meetings, he said, oh, I just put that in there because I was just following the decisions, I'll write another decision, they'll have it in front of them, they can discuss that decision at this meeting.
And we did discuss it.
You just, I thought you just shut it right down, I didn't see the tractor, you, you specifically said, okay, does anybody want to vote on allowing tractor-trailers on this site?
Well, I, it, it was, it was part of the conditions that were read, and they've been read at two separate meetings, and I asked for discussion or concerns in relation to each of them. And we could have voted on each of them had any of the members raised their hands and opened it for discussion or concerns. I personally think, in my personal opinion, I would love to move forward with this, but I don't feel it would be appropriate, and that I might be missing something if we didn't continue it to the next meeting when Mr. Bott can be in attendance.
Okay, but is there a discussion that goes on between now and the next meeting that you guys can have a decision that you're voting on, or?
Well, what, what will happen is, at the close of the public hearing, we will deliberate the issues, and following that, at our next meeting, we will have a draft decision. If we can all agree on it, then it will be signed and, and move, and certified with the clerk.
Okay.
All right. The board will accept a motion to continue the public hearing to December 13th, 2022 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dionne, thank you very much.
We've got to have a vote. Huh? We've got to have a vote.
Yes, we do have to have a vote.
Yes, Dionne says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Evan Robinson says aye.
Colin Stoudamire says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye, thank you very much. Our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of Weathervein at Patriots' Pines requesting a special permit and site plan review to sections 2230, 3100, 3900, 4300, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw, and a definitive subdivision plan pursuant to the Carver subdivision control law for property located at Zero South Meadow Road in Carver. Assessors map 112, lots 1-5E, 1-5I, 1-5J, 1-5K, 1-5L, MPQ and R, including lot 3-88A and map 107, lot 1-4A. The applicant seeks to append nine plus or minus acres of adjoining land to the property and modify the subdivision boundaries in compliance with MGL Chapter 41, Section 81W. II, increase the unit count from 54 units to 66 units. III, alter the building configuration to create zoning-compliant triplexes and IV. Adjust the roadway layout and lot configurations to accommodate alterations to phases two and three of the project in the residential agricultural zoning district. You haven't had an opportunity to.
Andy Glines with Fossett O'Neill, we haven't issued a comment letter for this application yet, we're in the process of reviewing it. I can certainly try to address any comments or concerns the board has tonight, but ultimately we'll want to finish and issue a formal comment letter.
Thank you, Mr. Glines.
Great.
If you would identify yourself, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeff Toccio, and I represent Weathervein at Patriot Pines LLC. Jim Bristol is here from the LLC, also Mark Romanowitz is here, who's our designer. You know, Sarah Sterns is back there from Beals &amp; Thomas with Dan Gagne, and we understand, we did hear back from Andy that we wouldn't have comments this evening, so what we wanted to do was come in before you folks give you a, an opening as to what it is that we're proposing. You'll remember that we were in here back, I believe it was February, over on Patriot Pines, I recall it was three-phase town home, 55-plus project, and we came in on a minor modification with respect to the first phase, which was granted. And what that entailed was, at the time, we had come to the determination with staff that the requirement on the townhouses was that instead of the single units, it wound up being triplexes. You'll remember that first phase had eight triplexes, which the board approved as part of that Phase 1. And also at that time, we went in and we finished the mailroom, which was out at the entrance, coming off of South Meadow Road. That's under construction presently, and why don't I, real quickly, is it okay if I stand up and go to the board? I'll carry this, I believe, with me. Thank you. So up in front of what we've got today, what I'll do is I'll start over on the, on the left-hand side. I've got an exhibit, you can see the blue, you can't from where you're situated, probably see what the black, which is overlaid, but basically, there was prior approvals for this project in 2018, and then in 2019, there was a minor modification, and again, you folks saw us earlier this year. You can see the blue area, that's pretty much the approved limit of, of work, and again, South Meadow is over on the east side or to the right, goes in off of South Meadow, heading on west, closest to South Meadow, that is Phase 1. So again, that is eight, three-unit buildings, so that winds up being the 24 that have already been approved. Real quickly, construction's ongoing today, so if you drive by, you can see, this is from South Meadow, excuse me, South Meadow's going by, coming into the property, you can see the beginning of that mailroom, the community mailroom that is there, also is effective with a boulevard, and you'll remember that there was parking, et cetera, that's what it looks like, I believe this was taken today. We've got several of the homes in Phase 1, which are already under construction, you can see the attachments, you can see the dwellings, pretty much, you know, weather-tight as you can see, we've got a foundation over that's already poured, we've got slab for the garage, so this is the, you know, the progression. What you're doing is you're looking beyond Phase 1 over to Phase 2, so you're looking over to the west on this photograph. Another angle, which is taken a little closer, again, South Meadow, but also Wade Street will be down off to the bottom, you can see some of the golf course, which is to the north of, of the property, over on the Plymouth side, so that's what we show there. What we are looking to do this evening is to go beyond where we are, so basically in segments, Phase 2 and then Phase 3, and I'm running out of what I've got, excuse me, one second. Yeah, I'll go in for here. Easiest to show you folks with the board what's happening. What we're doing is, we're looking as we go forward, again, Phases 2 and 3, what's happened in this instance is we're looking at what was previously approved, which is the 54 total units, we're seeking to increase it up to 66 units, they're all going to be triplexes, so as part of this, in conjunction with adding to the unit, unit count, excuse me, we're also going to make them all conform with what the layout that was approved for Phase 1. And what we do is, we achieve this through recent acquisitions of two pieces of land. One piece down off of Wade was about four acres, what that does is, that allows us to be able to get the position which is, excuse me, which is a position of where the emergency access road was originally. So what happens now is that that is owned, and it was all combined, there was basically a Form A plan, which was before you folks, just recently. What that does is, that allows us to make that part of the open space, to be able to be in a position to increase the open space, which is available here. Additionally, there was another 13-acre piece that was an AD make-piece parcel, and that was part of that Form A that you folks looked at back at the end of September as well. And about five acres of that piece is appended over to the west end of, of what was Phase 3, so it's the far west end that we're looking at here. What we're doing overall, I mentioned, an increase in open space, we go from like almost 11, about 10.85 acres, which was approved as part of the previous configuration, and that gets up to about 16 and a half acres, so that, that winds up working out well. The affordable units increased now from six were approved, with the numbers, with the 10%, that number now goes up to seven, so we've got the seven affordable units, which are now in play. And then additionally, the original approval had single garages, and the parking spaces that were approved was just one space were in the garage, and then one in the driveway outside, and then there were, I think, 13 guest spaces. What we've done, the Weathervein configuration utilizes two-car garages, so what that does is, that allows us to put two cars into the garage, two in each driveway, and then additionally, I believe there were, there were five approved spaces. And then additionally, I believe there were five approved spaces for the mailroom. So that allows us to park this a little more consistently with what they built elsewhere for the Weathervein product. What we are also looking at in this instance is a moving of the road northward. So the prior approved, you can see where the cut is, where it's cleared. That was cleared before. The new configuration moves the road away from Wade by about 100 feet. So what it does is, it shifts it up, so it's closer up to the golf course. So that configuration winds up allowing us to fit the houses in well. But again, they shift up slightly to the north. So we think that that's a design feature, which is a plus. These triplexes fit in very well with this configuration with the roads, and gives us more opportunities to be able to group them together. Obviously, just de facto, they have to be grouped, but it allows for us to lay them out in a real clean manner. And again, this exhibit probably shows that the best. Additionally, when you go over to Phase Three, the prior approval had this traditional cul-de-sac, and then it had common drives, which expanded off of that. What this does, this new configuration, because we were able to pick up that additional land over on the west, we're able to put in kind of that loop road, which instead of, again, going off of just a centralized cul-de-sac, it allows us to be in a position to have all of the units arrayed kind of in an oval. So they lay out nicely, they position themselves well versus each other, and then they've got a nice relationship to the road as well. Waivers that are requested, nothing beyond what was already either granted in 2018 or 2019 as part of that minor modification. And we think that overall, what it does is, it brings it closer into compliance with, you know, what the requirements are with respect to the townhouse layouts. It allows us to put it in in a balanced way, and it also allows us to integrate some more of those pieces, to increase the open space, and then provide a little more breathability between some of the units. With that said, it's basically a major modification. So obviously, we had all the butter notice of site plan review, also the special permit, and the 55-plus remains all in place. So other than that, there really aren't significant changes, other than what I just ran through. With that, if there are questions that we can field for you folks, we do understand that we will be coming back after Andy issues his comments. We'll be responding to those. But, you know, interested to see if you folks have any questions. If there's anything technical in nature that you'd like Sarah to, you know, expound upon, we can certainly do that. Or I didn't know if, that's probably something for a follow-up second meeting.
So, questions I have as far as the areas that are closer to Wade Street. Is that going to be left forested, or is all that area going to be deforested?
So on the Wade Street side, it's basically open space with, we've got some, the darker pieces are drainage, you know, drainage-type structures. So that'll remain. And then the emergency access road will be, you know, per the spec for the fire department, what they require.
Right. But, so I'm looking up closer to the loop over there in the mapped area, in the overhead, the other one to the left there. And then if you go to your right just a little bit, right there, that area, stuff like that, is that area, is that staying all forested, or is it? Because it looks like it's forested now.
Yeah.
Based on...
And you can't see it very well, but we've got a tree outline. So if you don't have that, go ahead, Mark.
Hi, Mark Romanowitz with Bristol. Everything that's shown right here with the forest area is staying. There's stormwater, septic leaching, stormwater, septic leaching, stormwater. So that's all going to remain open space. These old abandoned blogs will stay on the Wade Street piece as they are today. Excuse me.
Okay.
Yeah, that's better. This is just impossibly distant from here.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can see what we've done is, we've got, actually shows the tree outline, so it hugs it. It hugs it really well. You know, it's a benefit for neighbors, a benefit for potential residents when they're going in.
I do have a question. Chad Kavicki, 11 Wade Street.
Can you get the microphone, please, for him, please?
Yeah. Say it again, say the name again.
Chad Kavicki, 11 Wade Street. I must have missed a meeting, because the original approval was, what, 38 units? I'm going back a few years. I sat on the floor for the original.
I'm not sure. The last thing I saw was...
What about the water?
24.
Has anybody addressed that? Are you talking 66 wells now? How many wells are going in?
How many wells do we have, having?
12, 11 or 12 wells.
11 or 12 wells? Because I know my property, lots of old bog, and when they used to run that, my water pressure dropped. So, you know, you're talking all those wells, all those units behind these houses.
Again...
They are all located mostly on the northerly side of the property, close to the golf course. But there are some, sorry, I'll point it out.
All familiar with the property.
Mark, you want to do that?
So the wells, they're clustered in areas around the housing. There's no wells in the open space along here. There will be wells located, and they could be on this side. We haven't got to that point. But what we can keep them on the northerly side of that cluster. But they're usually grouped in clusters of nine or 12 homes.
Gosh, it's good, like I said, because I know when they ran the bogs, I don't know what you guys got, Mike.
Over in this location, yeah.
And I'm assuming those, all those properties can have sprinkler systems, the whole nine kinds.
There'll probably be a master system that works off of one of the wells that comes off here. We've got some extra wells drilled on this side, so it makes sense to use those for that.
I do remember saying they had, at the beginning of this whole thing, years back, they had like 38 wells or something like that, and it was going to be ridiculous. And then you guys dropped it, I think, to 19. I'm glad to hear there's 12. But you're adding 12 units. So my concern is, there's a chance, you know, what's that going to do with our water pressure? You're throwing 12 more units into this mix. So that's 12 more, you know, families, let's just call it, you know, couples maybe, over 55, that are going to be using water. So, you know, out of the 12, how 12 wells handle that extra 12 people? So that extra 12 units. How did you hear that?
Yeah, and we can address that, not this evening. The good news is, is the 55 and over, it only, the rating winds up being 150 gallons per day, per unit. So the senior water use is specifically identified by DEP as being low. We run into that a lot. So having the 55 and over, the water usage is significantly lower. And it's not just not having children, it's just whatever uses there are for water, they find that people 55 and over use significantly less. So usually, it's like 110 gallons per bedroom, if it's not age-restricted. Here, you wind up, you know, with the 150 per unit. So from a water perspective, that's like less than, you know, two bedrooms in your house or my house. So it winds up being a plus.
There's no chance of hooking up the Plymouth main right on South Meadow Road?
I don't think so.
Because I know the original went back at the, seven years ago, it was talked about that.
I'm sorry, attaching to what?
Yeah, his question was, is there any chance of...
Hooking up the Plymouth main on South Meadow.
Hooking into the main is his question. And then he had said that, like, seven years ago, he thought there were discussions along those lines.
So along those lines, are you, so the wells that you're looking at using, utilizing for this is going to be shallow wells, as opposed to, since you're using fewer wells, has there been consideration of doing deep wells instead?
I don't know what the overall depth of the wells are, but we have done a flow test, and it supports the fire protection, as well as the domestic water for each grouping of homes. So there'd be a grouping of three clusters or nine homes that support it. But I don't know how deep they are. They're larger wells, they're eight-inch casing at this point, so I don't know.
And that is a good point. We also have to carry the fire suppression because of the type of building.
Right, right.
So, you know, so we've actually, you know, got the well testing for both of those pieces, so...
Okay. Now, is it one well per structure, per residence?
No. So it's one, it's one per...
There's grouping of nine or 12.
Yeah, so nine, so nine or 12, so that would be three or four of the buildings.
Oh, three or four structures.
Yeah, exactly. But three dwelling units per structure.
Right. Are they public wells?
No, they're private.
Private wells.
As part of the condominium association?
Yes.
There are affordable units dispersed throughout the park.
Right.
Are they dispersed within each triplex? In other words, ones on the left, ones in the middle, ones on the right?
So as part of, as part of the original minor modification back earlier this year, the requirement was, I believe, two, two, and two. So two in each phase. Now, we're not, we don't have a round number of six anymore, so we'll have to come out with how it comes out, whether it's, you know, 232 or 223.
With each of the three dwellings, is it not always going to be the center unit?
Oh, you, you, yeah, you did, under the regulations, they have to be dispersed and, you know, indistinguishable from the others. So we haven't gotten to the point where we've suggested where they would be yet. So right now...
In your first, some of the plans designed, you had so close together, it'd be disadvantage to be in the middle, as far as the number of windows and walls. These seem to be more disconnected, you know, so each house would have three or four sides and windows. But as far as every affordable house won't be the center unit in each one of the, so that if I live in a center unit, the odds of seven out of something, I'm affordable, instead of random, you couldn't, you know, decrease the odds of figuring out where the affordables are. If they're all in the middle, you increase the odds of figuring out where they are.
Right. So Jim Bristol with Weathervein, just a point on the center units. We'll disperse them, some end units, some center units, but typically, when a triplex is built, the center unit only has two walls of windows, the front and back. Every one of these units has four walls of windows because of the way they're connected. So the center unit doesn't have that same stigma that a typical triplex would. These, every one of these triplexes will live like a single-family home. So it's, it was a long time figuring it out with you folks, but it's, they're coming out nice, so...
Mr. Bristol, I know it wasn't included in this package, but maybe to help him out, you could include the designs for the houses?
Yep.
And I remember you showed how they were all connected and everything.
Yes.
I thought that was very helpful and informative.
Yep. We'll submit that before the next hearing.
I appreciate that.
Well, we plan to work with about six different designs that are pretty much interchangeable in the different spots, so...
Also, Don, I highly recommend checking out their, when they came back before us, back in February, when they described what they, the new plan that they had come up with and everything else. Very, very informative, and a lot of really good information in there, as far as the design of the buildings and stuff like that. Highly, highly recommend it. We will be requiring monitoring wells in each of the two phases after some issues we've run with other subdivision sites. It's been recommended to us on subdivisions of this particular size, monitoring wells should be done. Mr. Glyons, pre and post-development water issues, maybe something that we can use to address some of the concerns that were brought up?
So we're, Andy Glyons with Fuston O'Neil. We're still in the process of reviewing the whole stormwater management design, but at the moment, it seems that the applicant's proposed development and approach to stormwater management in Phase Two and Three is consistent with their approach for Phase One. One question I did have that I hope the applicant may be able to clarify tonight is the intent on the pond, which is located in the center, open space area. And I understand that that is designed to have a permanent pool in it. And based on some of the butter comments tonight, I'm wondering if the owner and applicant team may look into using that for irrigation on-site.
When we, when we build ponds like that in other projects, we typically feed it with a well. I know it probably gets some stormwater, but I believe that pond's lined?
I'm not sure yet.
I don't think it interfaces with groundwater, but I'm not 100% sure, so I would defer to...
Yes, it's lined.
It's lined, yeah. So when we've done that in other developments, we line it, keep the depth of it to a minimum, and we feed it with a well. So it becomes a nice feature in the community, having the pond and all the life that comes with that. And we typically irrigate out of it.
The square footage, yeah?
So I guess if it would be feasible to potentially route some of the stormwater to help feed that pond, then potentially that could be used for some irrigation storage. It may not be feasible, but I guess I'd recommend having the applicant team look into that.
Yep, I would think we could at least get some houses in the circle to it, so we will look at that.
Yeah.
Is the well, is going to feed that one 12 wells, or is that number 13?
We have one in the first phase that my irrigation guys are saying will serve the whole community.
Okay. But you said you had 12 wells. The question is, is that going to be 13 wells?
I'll have to confirm that, yeah.
I believe that, as I understand, there's 12 proposed, or 11 proposed parcels of land with units on them. So my understanding is that the 12th well would be for irrigation uses.
And are the wells notated on the maps?
They currently are shown on Phase One. One of the comments that I did make on Phase Two and Three areas is that they weren't depicted, at least in my current review.
We can add that?
And something else, you know, looking at the location of the golf course, do you, are you guys aware of what they use for irrigation as far as, and how that might affect the wells for the residents?
I am not familiar with whether they have a pond or a well.
That's something that we might need to look into, as far as, you know, if they're running, if they're running irrigation throughout using groundwater, and it's taken away from your use of groundwater for the residents and for irrigation, then it's a, I'd hate for, I hate for those wells to run dry and then...
Me, too.
And then start affecting the other neighbors on Wade and whatnot.
All the testing we've done to date speaks to an ample supply, so, but we can confirm what the golf course uses.
Is the golf course in Plymouth or Calhoun?
It's in both towns, but I don't believe it would use town water. That would be expensive for a golf course, so...
Not only they have a pond, they use a pond. Normally.
Yep.
My question is, these units that you're going to pot in, are they going to be the same type of units in Phase One, or are they changed?
We'll submit the six or seven designs that we're working with. So it'll be the same ones, plus a couple more. So we have, we'll have a range of about 1,300 square feet to, I think the biggest one is about 2,300 square feet, and that's a couple of the existing homes.
Are they all going to be two and three bedrooms? I know there's... I know there's, the three bedrooms is less than 15%. Are there going to be one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
So, our typical design is two bedrooms, all of them with a first-floor master. Some of them have both bedrooms on the first floor, but typically upstairs is a guest suite and a loft area that might be used as an office, TV room.
One of our recommended conditions of approval in regarding to that is stating that seven of the units will be affordable housing units, and then also no more than 10 units will have three bedrooms, which is the 15%.
15%. We'll certainly have more questions later on down the line, but any questions?
So, sorry, one other question with regards to the grading. I'm looking at, I'm looking at your photo down there, and as I recall, that was supposed to be a significant dip in the, there was, where you're looking at a lot of, in the previous, and it looks pretty flat in, in the picture. I don't know, it could be just optical illusion. But I remember we were talking about it, and concerns about ice and, and things like that, so I'm just wondering if we, yeah, I think it was around that, it was around that curve area, and there were...
Did we address that in Phase One, these modifications, add some drainage in the lawn area?
Right, yeah, well, that's what I was wondering, was there more grading done that we weren't aware of, or?
No, we kept the road, the road profile, say, the same, but we were able to do some grading in here and some additional stormwater to pick up anything that came off of the future homes from the north to the south, and that water is introduced into this basin.
Okay, great. And, and so for the rest of the, for the rest of the stuff, I mean, I haven't had a chance to really dig deep into the plans or anything, but as far as the, as far as the grading that you're going to have to do, you're going to have to, are you guys going to have to cut down a lot, or are you just going to follow the contours of the land for the most part, or with the exception of what leveling you'll have to do for the, for the plots?
Right, generally try to, what we try to do is follow the grades along the rear so that we make sure the homes have a view to the golf, you know, and then let the homes drive that grade, but we generally follow those grades here. It does drop to a low point in, on this side as the land drops from the east to the west, so.
Okay, all right, so...
Generally, the, the grading.
Generally maintaining the grading, the natural grading of the, of the topography?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, looking, reviewing the layout plan and profile plans, it appears that most of the areas where they do have cut, it's limited to about three or four feet of cut, and some of those areas are through hills that are isolated on the property that, you know, it's not, they're not cutting a large trench through, you know, a large tract of land. So, I think in general, their proposed grading approach is pretty straightforward and efficient to, I'm assuming they're going for net neutral on this development, but without actually doing cut fill.
Nice.
Can you tell me how close these houses are to the golf course? Probably more, more say like, you know, is it close to a fairway, the back of the house or anything?
Well, we hold the 40-foot buffer, that's part of the regulation, plus we usually keep 10 to 15 feet beyond that so that there's some usable backyard space, because each of these homes live to the rear, so they might put a patio or a deck out in the back, so that, keep that patio out of the 40-foot buffer.
Yeah, my concern would be golf, golf balls coming into the resident, into the area, you know.
And most golf communities, you do get a few odd balls coming through.
Right, so my thing would be, you know, would be wise to put up a netting up the lawn, yeah.
Right.
To the golf balls from entering the area.
We'll put that in our condo docs.
I did work on the golf course, and that was one of the issues with the neighbors, was, you know, it's three walls.
Yeah, we'll put it in our condo docs that we have the ability to put up a net if there's an issue. We find a few balls out there, but it doesn't seem to be too bad.
Well, I understand, but you're not living there yet, you don't know if they're going to bounce off the house, bounce off a car.
That's basically a pitching putt over there, obviously.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Part three, you're not using any more of the pitching wood.
Okay, I don't know. You know, if you say golf course, I'm not getting...
They're hitting the house, they might be aiming at it.
That's all.
Thank you.
All right. Questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing, so I will be opening it up for the public to speak.
Do you mind if I stay here?
Yeah, you can stay right there.
You'll have to...
Yep, I'm Brian Abatello, I live at 15 Wade. You okay?
Engineer, you'll have to excuse the public seat. Thank you.
Want me to wait? Okay, sorry, pal.
All right, you're on.
All right, I think I'll manage.
If you identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Brian Abatello, I live at 15 Wade Street, I'm just, just almost the last house on the right. So, my question, I guess, would be about the drainage, so, the drainage ditches, so have those increased, or are they the same size that they were in the original plans? Since now that you're adding, you know, a few more units and things have changed and grading has changed, have they changed? Yep.
It may be better for Dan to speak to, but generally the homes are, I think the density is similar here. I think we've increased the density in the rear part of the site, but Dan knows specifically because he's actually lived and breathed with it.
All right. Do you want to give me that one?
Thank you, Dan Gagnon, Beals and Thomas. So, generally, the site has increased some impervious to have the access to the houses out back, and with the added impervious area, there is some increase in the stormwater retention areas. They were managed the best we can to keep them away from the abutting properties. If you'll notice, in the approved plan, we actually went all the way down to here with the stormwater basin, and we have managed to be able to keep it up closer to the houses as we moved the road to the proposal.
Moving away from Wade Street.
Correct, yes.
That's good news.
And then my, my other question is, I remember in the original, been here a couple of times with you guys, there was some talk of adding some, I don't know what you want to call them, I'll just call them ornamental trees for, just for, or some privacy-type barrier trees that you were talking about planting, is that still in the, in effect, or is it just going to be the forest that's already there? I remember them talking, they all were talking about adding some, some decorative trees or something on the hills to also provide more privacy for the people on Wade Street.
I don't know what was originally involved, and maybe Jim would address it, it'd be better, as he's familiar with that original filing.
Yeah, if anybody from Wade Street, be happy to come meet you at your house and look at any specific concern, and if we can help you with plantings.
Yeah, I was under the...
I think, I think the...
That was going to happen as it came up the ride from the street, you were all talking about adding extra, you know, extra tree line or something like that.
Yeah, I, I wasn't involved in the original permit, so, but happy to meet you at your home and look at any specific concerns.
Yeah, all around the past back then.
Yeah, all right.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you very much for taking the, giving me the time. Thanks.
You mentioned decks. Now, I'm just trying to get some clarification. This is going to be more or less a condominium-style development?
That's correct.
So, in essence, all the land will be under the condominium association ownership, and the domiciles will be the condos, correct? Now, you mentioned that adding decks and fences and things along those lines, now how does that work into, talk about, either, either they're there or it's part of the condominium association's responsibility?
It would be the homeowner's responsibility to take care of the decks.
Well, not to take care of them, but are there decks included with the design of the house, or is this something that homeowners are going to come on later and ask for certain amenities?
No, I would, they would be part of the building program, so if, for instance, if there's a walkout basement, we'd have to put a deck in that might be 10 to 12 feet out from the house, and some width, depending on the size of the family room. Usually, it's based on the width of the family room, so that might be 10 to 12 feet in depth, 14 feet in width. On the homes that are just on grade, that would just be an on-grade patio out there or lawn area.
Okay, so it's part of the, the building of the...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right, yep.
Have you come up with, you worked something out for the condominium plans, or when are you expecting your first residence to be sold or put on the market?
We've prepared the documents. I think at some point, we have to submit those documents to council here as well, but we've prepared the documents, we've done our as-bills on those homes that we've, Jeff has shown you some of the, the plan, the photos of, so we've as-built those, prepared them for the documents. I'm not sure when we'll record them or when we'll get you the documents to council, but it's soon. We've just gone through our second iteration of red lines ourselves.
Okay.
Have you had anybody express interest in purchasing?
Jim, is that you?
We just put a couple of the units in MLS this last week, so we're just adding field phone calls. There were some folks that have followed the project for a long time that are on a waiting list, but everybody's timing is different, so with, to your question, we're probably 90 days from a first resident. We're making a move in. Hoping for a bylaw.
Yeah. Anybody from the public want to speak? Seeing none?
One more question real quick.
Sure.
So, the, the pond over there on the loop, what, what's the square footage you expect that to be?
I'm not sure. You know, Dan, I'll tell you...
Dan, do we know?
I would say that it's probably roughly, it's probably 120 feet long by 80 feet wide, approximately, as I look at the scale in that drawing.
Okay. All right, and you said that's going to be lined, right?
It is going to be lined.
So, it's going to be impervious?
Correct.
Okay. Are we going to have to pursue a special permit for that?
If it's 10,000 square feet or more, but for some reason, I thought that that was included in...
Yeah, we, we added the 4,300 as part of the application, too.
Oh, it is part of the application, oh, okay. Just wanted, yeah, just wasn't sure, just wanted to make sure that we had all of our bases covered.
Because the amount of houses alone would...
Right.
Yeah, I wasn't even thinking about that.
All right. I'm good for now. Mr. Glines, it's a big project. How much time do you feel you need to, and, and allow the applicants the ability to respond?
Well, I know the applicant's team has a good track record of getting response comments back quickly to me. I don't want to overcommit my staff, but I will certainly be able to get the final letter to them the week after Thanksgiving, obviously going to shoot for...
And then does, does January work for our next, next hearing?
I think January would certainly give Fussin O'Neil and the applicant's team enough time to have some back and forth, and hopefully come back to the board with clean bill of health for, you know, no outstanding comments.
Off the top of my head, I can't give you a date certain in January, so if it's all right with you guys, we'll continue it till December 13th, and, and then if necessary, which I expect it will be, then we will continue it after that.
Okay. And we could just do that, just through writing, find out what we've got for the, the dates, and we'll submit a request for an extension into January?
Yeah, well, you just, yeah. Continuance, yep.
Probably the 10th, looking at the calendar.
Right, but I, I just assumed...
Yeah.
Date certain. So, the board will accept the motion to continue the public hearing of Weathervein at the links, Phases Two and Three, to December 13th at 7:00 PM.
So, moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gatski says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
All right, have a great Thanksgiving, everyone. We'll see you soon. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company requesting a definitive subdivision, Gibbs Street subdivision, approval pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located off Wareham Street on Assessor's Map 127 Lot 33 and Map 128 Lots 1, 2, 3, 6-1, and 15 in Carver, Mass, in a residential agricultural district. Proposed work includes construction of a plus or minus 400 linear foot roadway and cul-de-stac stormwater management system and offgrading to support a three-lot conventional subdivision. Each proposed single-family dwelling lot will have its own private well and septic Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Rob D'Ambrosio, D'Ambrosio Law in Plymouth. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. So, as Chairman Shea noted when he read the notice, I'm here on behalf of the Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company, seeking approval of a definitive subdivision plan to subdivide Mr. Garrettson's cranberry property. So, I've got Gary Garrettson here with me, he's the principal of Slocum Gibbs. I've also got, from Beals and Thomas, I've got Sarah Sterns, our wetland scientist, and Daniel Gagnon, our civil engineer. And I'd just like to walk you briefly through an overview of the project. We wouldn't expect you to necessarily vote it tonight, as we just received some peer review comments from Fussin O'Neil a couple of days ago that we're going to need to address, and you're probably going to ask some questions as well, but maybe in five minutes, I'll kind of walk you through why we're here, if that's okay. So, to recap how we got here, we filed, prior to my involvement, a preliminary subdivision plan was filed back in April of this year. That was followed by a couple of planning board hearings, so you guys should have some familiarity with this site. And there was one cut at peer review by Andy Glines at Fussin O'Neil back in the spring. We then had a preliminary pre-definitive subdivision plan filing meeting with Tom Bott, our planner, or your planner, I should say. So, I think everyone's had a good chance to kick the tires on this project, and we hope that's rounding into a form that you'll be pleased with. There's been, obviously, robust review, and now here we are under subdivision control, proposing a three-lot subdivision. So, again, as Chairman Shea read into the notice, we're contemplating approximately a 400-foot roadway with a cul-de-stac. It's going to meet all design standards, it's gentle 2% grade, it comes out onto Wareham Street... It comes out onto Wareham Street, which is a public way. So, we've got compliant street coming off a public street. The property, again, as noted in the notice here, is a 451-acre property approximately. We're in the residential agricultural zoning district, so we do have agricultural use on the site right now. There are numerous cranberry bogs. And again, we're sighted, as I'm sure you're aware, in South Carver, near the Wareham town line with this property. Our three lots are each going to be suitable for a residential, single-family home. Those are allowed by right in the residential agricultural zoning district. Each lot's going to comply with the minimum area frontage requirements, exceeding 60,000 square feet, 125 square feet of... I'm sorry, 150 feet of frontage. We delineate the wetlands pursuant to an ORAD, an Order of Resource Area Delineation from the Conservation Commission. We've got good sightlines. We've engaged a traffic engineer, Ron Mure and Associates. He saw no issue with the property. You know, we've selected a nice site for the cul-de-sac here. It comes off, obviously, a good road with good sightlines. We've selected this location also to minimize the amount of vegetation that's going to have to be removed, as there's already some development in this area. We're able to, with this design, retain the cranberry bogs to the rear of these lots, to the rear of the property. So, that serves to maintain the character of the property post-subdivision. And again, I think we've got a plan here that's complying with your rules and regulations. We do acknowledge, as I noted at the jump here, that we have a handful of comments that are largely technical in nature, and we feel very capable of addressing that were raised by your peer review consultant, Fussin O'Neill. So, we would endeavor to address those in the coming weeks. And happy to field any questions that you have at this stage.
How long has this property been under single ownership?
I believe since the 1950s.
1990.
1990. Over 100 years.
Now, you're asking for a reduced-length cul-de-sac?
I don't know that we're asking for reduced length. We're asking for a 400-foot roadway. Maybe I've misunderstood your question.
Maybe. I thought the minimum required was around 600 feet.
You've got a maximum.
Maximum. Okay, all right. Is there buildings in the area? It looks like one of the buildings...
Yes, there are some farm buildings in the area and a residence as well.
Looks like two residences.
We've got a residence, an office, a barn, and an outbuilding, I believe.
And is the cul-de-sac going over? Which one is the residence? Which... I wonder if we can get a map that superimposes the proposed cul-de-sac onto the...
We actually thought you might have that question, and here we go.
Then send that.
Spot here. So, yeah. So, this is the location. Right now, we're only proposing one new house. Again, I guess really laying out the potential location of one new house. This is the existing house. That's a garage there. Again, and this is the barn, and this is the office building for Slocum Gibbs. And there's an existing house here as well. So, that's the layout. Again, you can kind of make up the lot lines here. You've got Lot A here, Lot B, and Lot C. So, the roadway, of course, won't interfere with the existing structures. And this is, again, that's going to be the one new structure that's proposed in terms of layout.
Now, why... Just curious, why wouldn't you apply for a rear lot for that and separate it into the other three, as technically all three lots have frontage? But I can see where getting into the existing house might be an issue. But why wouldn't you put in a shared driveway and apply for a rear lot in regards to this?
So, you're asking why we wouldn't... Well, this... We wouldn't need a rear lot here for the new house, because this is...
And you've got so much frontage on that particular lot.
Right, so maybe I'm missing your question.
So, why wouldn't you apply for an A and R in regards to a rear lot and put in a shared driveway to reach the rear of the property? Where the existing house is.
Because that's not the desired lot configuration. We want to configure it as set forth on the subdivision plan and create three lots configured, as you see.
And what's the purpose?
It's a lot division. So, we're dividing our lot into three lots in compliance with your rules and regs. And, you know, potentially for single-family residential purposes.
Is it for a single-family residential purpose? Is that what's being proposed, then?
Well, we're not proposing... We're not pulling building permits now, but that is what this lot layout is providing for, yes. That's what's permitted in this zoning district.
I would like to have a copy of that distributed to the board when you get a chance.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
On that note, Andy Glines with Fussin O'Neill. As the applicant's counsel noted, the majority of our comments in our comment letter that's dated November 19th are fairly straightforward, technical comments. One item I did want the applicant to clarify is in regard to Section 2330 of the zoning bylaws pertaining to multiple principal structures on one lot. I guess I know that currently, it's depicting an additional building on Lot A, correct, which already has a couple existing structures. And as I understand, obviously, I have to defer to the building official to make ultimate determination. But I don't believe the building official would allow multiple principal structures on a lot in a residential agricultural zone. So, I guess if you can speak to that item.
Yeah, sure. That's a fair question. We saw that in your comment letter. So, as you pointed out, it's the inspectional services determination. If they were to so determine that we couldn't construct that house without removing another structure, then I think that we'd be obligated to do that. So, again, right now, we're talking about lot lines and a lot division. If this comes to fruition, if we end up building, you know, as shown on the layout here, we'd have to address that concern if the building department raises it.
And I guess, potentially, would your client want to propose a fourth lot so that, I guess, the existing buildings would be on their own lot? So that Lot A would strictly be for another proposed potential residential?
So, you're suggesting we could create a fourth lot where? I don't follow you.
So, I guess if a... I think a fourth lot could potentially be proposed with frontage if, I guess, the boundary for Lot A and B were adjusted. But it's just a question about addressing multiple proposed principal structures on the building, or one lot.
I understand.
When you include that, can you please include the 65-foot and 100-foot buffer zones in regards to that?
Are you... Buffers from what?
Any wetlands.
I don't think we have any proximate here, but we'll...
Right. I can't tell, but it looks like the cul-de-sac goes right up to a cranberry bog. And I'd just like to see the delineation in regards to that.
Okay.
And if you can also identify on the plans what the particular buildings are?
Yeah, I think this would be useful. We'll give you a copy of this.
Thank you.
So, the subdivision road is for three lots, a house is only, right?
I'm sorry.
Subdivision road is for three lots. A house is only.
Correct. Residential lots, yes.
For residential housing.
Correct. That's what's allowed in this zoning district.
And those are the houses that are staying and you're not moving them?
Again, no current proposal to move any houses. If we do end up, depending on what gets built ultimately, we might have to, you know...
Well, then, when you say that, then you don't know what type of cul-de-sac to put in there. If you don't know exactly what you're going to put in there, if you have the existing house, that's one thing. But if you're going to turn around and change it up to something different, it changes the roadway, doesn't it?
Well, no. Just to be clear, we're only proposing, we're only showing the location of one new house because we've got existing, we've got an existing house. So, we'd create three lots with one new house. So, we wouldn't run afoul of the current layout of the subdivision road.
I noticed there's a couple structures about a half-mile east on the lot, off of Wareham Street. Those cranberry structures.
Yeah, it's all agricultural, right?
Are these lots all going to stay in the same name, or you sell them?
Same.
So, they'll all stay in your name, just broken up into three different lots?
Yeah, nothing's being marketed right now.
Are those other properties being used right now?
Well, the property's being... It's primarily agricultural. You know, it's a large cranberry farming operation. If you look at the, I think it's sheet, there's a topo sheet here that really shows, gives you kind of an idea where the cranberry bogs are. It's PL4 in the plan set, and you can tell how much of the site is agricultural in nature.
Which one gives us our wetland to building issues?
Sheet, PL4, Mr. Gatski. That shows where the cranberry bogs lie on the property.
PL4?
PL.
Yeah. Right, okay. So, I see that now. What's that... Where's that in regards to the roadway?
So, it might be easy to turn it upside down, kind of to beat this. If you turn it upside down at the bottom of the sheet, you'd see Wareham Street, and you'd see...
Yeah, yeah. I see where it's coming in. But as far as when you... The ones that you have, the roadway drawn in, where are the...
You see that cluster of buildings on Wareham Street, on the cranberry bog side of Lot Line? That's our property. That's where the subdivision road would go.
Right, yeah, I see that. As far as the 100-foot buffer zone, 65-foot buffer zones to the wetlands?
Yeah, we're okay with that. We've got an ORAD. But we can show it on the plan.
C-5-1, you can see the...
Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, Sarah Sterns points out, I think, C-5-1, you can see the wetland line. It's kind of a cut sheet that shows the close-up of the street.
It's not identified. I'm guessing it's the one that bisects the center of the subdivision road? And is that the 100-foot or 65-foot, or...
That's the 100-foot.
That's the 100-foot? If that could be more clearly identified, I'd appreciate it, please.
Yes, and we can add the 65 to this as well.
Thank you.
In the supplemental plan, the local.
Thank you.
No, sir.
Okay. This is a public hearing. I don't see anybody from... Oh, I see you hiding back there.
Would you care to speak? No.
Okay. All right. No further questions from the board than Mr. Glines, a date that...
I... Well, we're waiting on a response to comments. The applicant's only had our comment letter for a couple of days. So, I think continuing until December 13th and giving the applicant opportunity to respond and have us review that response to comments would be reasonable.
Excellent. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. D'Ambrosio?
I beg your pardon, I was just confirming with my client. Could you please repeat it?
Would December 13 be...
I think we'd prefer to push into January, because we just got these comments yesterday.
All right. Again, I can't give you a date certain in January, so...
So, 12/13, we'll seek the continuance.
Yes, please. Thank you.
And we could do that by correspondence?
That's fine, absolutely.
Perfect, all right. And one other thing while I have you, I know typically, this board, or often, this board likes to do a site visit.
Yes.
So, if that's something you'd like to do, I mean, we'd be happy to schedule that now rather than, you know, kind of come loaded for bear in January.
Right, right. No, the sooner the better. I don't have a calendar on me. I apologize. I have an excessive amount of paperwork.
December 29th?
I'm thinking November.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would have to schedule something else.
Okay.
I'll be in either Providence or Martha's Vineyard that week.
For the whole week?
Yeah. Well, I've got to go to one, and then I've got to go to the others, so...
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I suggest a weekend, a Saturday, to do this? Because my problem's going to be, we're on market to get there at noon time.
Right. So...
And we don't have any...
It won't be this weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah, 3 o'clock.
And I was just thinking, maybe a Saturday morning or an afternoon, maybe?
So...
If the board agreed to it?
If it's good for the board, I would recommend Saturday, December 3rd, at 11 o'clock.
Is that late?
10 o'clock.
Can y'all make that, or...
I don't think I can, but I'm only in the way of those sidewalks. So, I think we've got Gary and Sarah.
I don't think I can be anywhere in the month of December. I'm straight out.
So, what can we do to make arrangements for Mr. Robertson to do a site visit? Is there anything left in this month that, that you might?
I'm, that's my problem. I'm straight out right till Christmas.
Okay.
You don't have to work all 400 days.
I don't know how fit you are. You could try.
Only 237.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. If, if we're likely going to continue into January, we may be able to find a time after your business slows down a little bit.
Yeah.
Or we even come back to it. So we're happy to schedule something.
Okay.
Separate from the board if need be.
All right. As long as you're willing to do that, that's fine. I'm just straight out, unfortunately.
Understood. I think we have some time here, so we're happy to do that.
Okay.
I may be looking at something similar, so.
You're not available Saturday, December 3rd?
Not that I'm not available, just.
At 10 o'clock?
I have to, I have to go kick some doors in in order to make it happen, so.
For Saturday, December 3rd? 10 a.m.?
Well, at 10 a.m. is, for me, the earlier the better.
For what?
For me, the earlier the better on Saturday.
Mr. Deion?
I would refer to Mr. Williams because I won't be.
Oh, okay.
I'm pretty much ready.
All right. Saturday, December 3rd, we'll schedule it for, for 9:30 a.m., if that's all right with you. And if we need to, we will see about accommodating Mr. Robertson at a later date.
And hopefully there's no snow.
It's fairly accessible anywhere, so it's, it'll be pretty easy then.
You'll have the opportunity to, to stake out the roadway and the lot lines?
Yeah, for December 3rd, we should be able to handle that, yeah.
Okay.
I'll email Tom immediately if there's a schedule snapper with that. Just getting this survey crew out there.
Well, Mr. Bott will be back next week too, so.
Is there any, like, landmark that would be?
I can send a lead point to Tom or Michelle.
Okay.
Distribute to the board.
Okay.
With the address of Good GPS. It's 107 Wareham Street.
107, okay. Yeah, just as I'm driving through, I just want to make sure that.
There's a building right on the side of the road. You almost can't miss it.
Okay, perfect.
But as we get closer, I can send a reminder for Michelle to distribute.
All right. If that's all we have, the board will accept a motion to continue the public hearing. Application for definitive subdivision plans, Gibbs Street, definitive subdivision applicant, Locum Gibbs Cranberry, public hearing to December 13th, 2022 at 7 p.m.
I'll make said motion, Mr. Deion.
Motion made by Mr. Deion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gasky. Any discussion? Seen that?
Mr. Deion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
I want to below says aye.
I think.
Should he say?
We're, we're going to include Mr. Williams in this if that's all right with you, Mr. Williams?
Can't roll on anything except later, but.
Well, I, I have a feeling that there's a potential abstinate, oh, for, okay, well, all right. So it's, it's acceptable. I was trying to take, take another considerations into effect. So we'll see you on December 13th, December 3rd and December 13th.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. The next order of business is request for extension to special permit site plan review approval for Northwest Plymouth Street Solar LLC 204 Plymouth Street in Carver, Mass.
Hi, guys. Triple header tonight. For the record, Rob Dambroso, Dambroso Law in Plymouth. I am here. Which one is this? This is Northwest Plymouth Street. So I'm here on behalf of NW Plymouth Street Solar LLC. Do you want me to present, Mr. Chairman?
Please, I, we all get your letter, but please.
Okay, yeah. So I'll, I'll keep it brief because I think the letter says most of what I have to say. But just to recap it briefly for people who may not have a chance to read it or it's not fresh in their mind. So my client, the applicant, Northwest NW Plymouth Street Solar LLC, holds both a special permit and a site plan approval for a large-scale ground-mounted solar, photovoltaic solar array on the property here at 204 Plymouth Street. It's a 6.2 megawatt DC array, and that was permitted in 2021. The permit currently runs through the both permits. They co-terminously expire in May of 2023. Right now, we're being proactive and seeking an extension for two years for the reasons that are set forth in the memo that I sent on November 3rd. Really, the reason being that we're facing a delay from Eversource. So this board, you guys have the discretion and the authority to extend special permits and/or site plan approvals for good cause. What is good cause? In this case, good cause is a delay that I think a lot of solar companies are facing, which is the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities is re-examining Eversource's grid right now. Eversource has proposed some modernization plans that are really sorely needed. The DPU is reviewing them. And until that's complete, that's really been an obstacle to completing the interconnection services agreement that really is necessary to bring these projects to fruition. So we're facing, I don't want to call it indefinite delay, but indeterminate delay right now. So that's the reason that we want the extension, and that's what we think is good cause. I guess what I would offer further is that, you know, we think this is not only necessary, but it's, well, helpful. But I think it's really beneficial to the town and the abutters because if the extension isn't granted, the applicant will probably have no choice but to commence construction a bit prematurely, which will extend the overall construction timeframe to the detriment of the abutters. You know, and furthermore, the existing, the property owners, this is a leased site. They'd like to continue harvesting and farming cranberries. You know, a portion of the bog's going to be decommissioned when the array comes online. And the further we can put that off, the longer this land can remain in agriculture. So that is why we're seeking an extension of this permit, and we hope you'll find that there's suitable cause.
All right. I noticed no waivers were granted in regards to underground utilities. And I, I understand part of that was that at the time you weren't proposing above-ground equipment, but you were anticipating that it would be the worst-case scenario as proposed by Eversource?
I'm sorry, is that a question? I, I, you ought to forgive me. I wasn't involved in the initial permitting of the project, but you're asking if we are determined to go underground with the transmission lines?
Well, I'm, I'm asking for clarification because at the time that this was proposed, it was stated that you were not proposing above-ground equipment on poles and that you were anticipating that it would be required by Eversource as a worst-case scenario. I don't see in, in here that at that time that any waivers were granted in regards to that. So I'm trying to find out where we're at in regards to that.
Sure, please.
Mr. Chairman, all for the record, Sarah Sterns with Beals &amp; Thomas. I was involved with the applicant during the permitting process with this board. And I, if I recall correctly, the underground, the utilities are proposed underground from the array to the point of interconnection at the street or close to Plymouth Street, where there will either be an at-grade interconnection infrastructure, meaning on a slab and in a box, or a series of poles. And I believe we had, and, and I'm trying to remember, but I believe we had proposed a couple of different scenarios based on what we understood at the time Eversource would likely be requiring for that point of interconnection. So the utilities across the site are all underground until that point of interconnection where nothing can continue to be underground. It either has to be at grade or on poles. So it, still, it's kind of up in the air. But, you know, I think at the time of permitting, we had laid out a few different options that we discussed. So we don't anticipate any changes to what has been approved at this stage.
All right, because that, that hadn't been approved. So I'm trying to figure out where we stand on this. Is that part of your process that you're going through now?
The point of interconnection on this site was approved as part of the site plan special permit. What we're going through now, or what the applicant is going through now, is what happens after that point of interconnection at, you know, where it connects to the rest of the utilities. And there's a group study that's going on in this whole region that has undergone significant delays, which is why a lot of these projects are being, are sort of languishing. So we don't anticipate any changes now, but, you know, as, as things are decided, that's, you know, we would keep the board apprised of that.
All right, because I'm, I'm asking because this is, these were your words, Ms. Sterns, that, that you weren't proposing above-ground, but that this was anticipated as a worst-case scenario in regards to the site plan, that, that nothing had been determined at that time. And I'm trying to find out where we stand in regards to this project in, on.
On that.
Because I don't see that any, you're requesting an extension because you haven't been able to do a sufficient amount to work onsite and it doesn't, and.
Right.
Typically, it's something that we're more than willing to.
Right.
To listen to. But again, as I recollect, July 13th, 2021, at that meeting, that this was what was said, that this was the worst-case scenario that was to be proposed.
For the point of interconnection. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Well, you were talking about adding 11 to 14 telephone poles.
At the point of interconnection, right, not across the site.
Not across the site.
Right.
You're underground up until.
Correct. The POI.
Transformer.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Now, has Eversource, is this part of Eversource's determination of whether poles are going in or not?
My understanding is that that gets decided once this study is completed, which is what is causing this delay. And then they start looking at the specific projects and the specific layout. So yes, what we had proposed and what was part of the approval is what we anticipated would be the worst-case scenario. So as far as I know, that has not changed yet. It could. We're hoping it would be reduced if it changes. But again, we can keep the board apprised of that. So I think this, the, the overall study in the region is really the thing that's kind of delaying.
Okay.
The specific, specific interconnection of multiple projects.
All right.
So I don't really know much more detail about that, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but that's my understanding of it.
I, I get the gist.
Okay.
And Andy Glynn, Fuston O'Neill, I can speak to that. On the other end, as a design consultant, Fuston O'Neill's dealing with similar delays with solar arrays that our company has been designing. And as the applicant mentioned, it's a large study that's being conducted that's delaying both interconnection agreements, which is applicants getting approval to distribute a certain amount of electricity to the grid as well as getting their final approvals on how that interconnection is actually done, which is actually two separate coordination processes with the utility. But my understanding is that, and expectation would be that the applicant would come back for a minor mod if the pole layout that the utility provider was requiring differed from what they originally proposed and was previously approved by the board.
Well, again, it's, I can only go that this was a worst-case scenario and what we approved was based on that there's potential for a much better or more fitting within our bylaws. So I will be requesting at some point prior to any approval of above-ground that the utility company specifically provides you with a letter stating why they're requiring it to be above-grade and their justification for it.
Okay. I mean, so just, again, point of clarification, it has to be either at grade or above grade. So, I mean, there's, underground is not an option at this point in the interconnection.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure everyone understands that.
I understand.
You're, you're maintaining, you're maintaining it underground up to the point of interconnection?
Yes, until we can't anymore.
Right.
Yes, correct.
So.
So you're clear with what county wants them in terms of an update? Because I'm not sure I am.
Well, if, if, if you're already underground, if at the point of interconnection down the line until, until it reaches the street or whatever the case may be, Eversource is going to have to provide a requirement saying that it has to be above the, above the grade. That's, that's the only way we can justify.
At some point in time, it has to connect.
Because originally, they were requesting 11 poles with all the equipment mounted on it, which would mean that that's not part of the interconnection, that the interconnection would happen after that point.
Well, that, that is all part of the interconnection because there are, and again, I don't, I don't really want it. I'm treading into a little bit more specificity than I like to. But there are a certain number of poles that are maintained by the lessee. And then at some point, the poles transition to the utility-owned poles. But that all has to happen. And that cluster, that above-ground cluster of infrastructures all considered part of the point of interconnection. The point is not just where it plugs into the street pole. Like, that whole configuration is considered the point of interconnection and we'll let Eversource sort that out with the solar developer. And, you know, I, again, I hope that what we proposed is, ends up being reduced. I mean, there's a lot of time now to sort this out. I, I have no idea what's happening behind the scenes with the utility company. And as we talked about in our original hearings, that was presented as, you know, what would be likely kind of the, the most development that, and that would be anticipated based on what we know at the time.
When we spoke to Eversource last month, they said it's based on your application. They try and provide the cheapest.
Yep. That's poles.
Yes.
Yeah.
But they said unless you request something else that they don't, they don't go for something else.
Right. And what we have found is that, and I don't, I'm not trying to, you know, throw shade at Eversource by any means, but I don't think they are able, willing or able to look at each specific project until that interconnection agreement is worked out. So we just have some time. We're, we're sort of just twiddling our thumbs, waiting for this to happen and.
And you're here to get more time.
Precisely. This is yours?
If you applied for a solar permit, which you did, and the only problem is, is your interconnection, what about installing all the poles for the solar panels out there already? I mean, it's still going to go through. It's underground all the way up to the connection. So why haven't you started any of that then?
Well, I think I can respond to that. We don't know if we have a project until we have permission to put power into the grid. If they ultimately say no or can't issue it in a way, we can't build the thing at million, you know, seven-figure cost and then find out we can't distribute the electricity.
No, I understand.
The grid might not get to. Yeah, so just to confirm, you're, the problem with the project is you haven't gotten permission to connect to the grid, not necessarily that, we don't know how you want to connect to the grid.
I think that's fair.
I think the DPU study's studying whether the grid can handle.
Can handle, yeah. The influx.
And what upgrades would be necessary to accommodate, yeah. And it's just taking a long, very long time for this region.
It's part of, I think, a statewide decarbonization mandate. So it's, again, it's, it's regulated. It's, comes from above and everyone's trying to.
it comes from above, and everyone's trying to toe the line.
You need a two-year extension?
Well...
I mean, look, we'd love to be up and running in six months, you know.
Four months.
Yeah, but that, we're trying to be realistic and, you know, not come back here every, every year.
Well, it's, we'd miss you if you didn't show up, so... Why doesn't the board, the chair will accept the motion to continue the special permit and the site plan approval till June 23, 2024. That would be a one-year extension. If they need more, they can come back and talk to us. But the board will accept the motion in regards to the request for extension to special permit, site plan review approval, Northwest Plymouth Street Solar Project 204 Northwest Plymouth Street.
When did this date it been maintained? March 22 or 21?
21.
Okay.
I'll make that said motion.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Any discussion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. So you have your extension till 6/23/2024, and not that, we're not looking forward to seeing you again on that date, but let's hope it's not necessary.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Happy Thanksgiving.
We're not going anywhere yet. You said you'd like to see us, so we'll just stay right here.
You're also a trifecta now.
Our next order of business is request for extension to special permit, site plan review approval for Fuller Street Solar LLC care of NewCo Development Services, assessors map 50, lots eight, and 10A in Carver.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Rob Dambroso, Dambroso Law, I'm here this time on behalf of Fuller Street Solar LLC. Similar to what I just presented, this project, which was permitted roughly the same time pretty much the last one, in May 2021, this is eight-and-a-half-megawatt DC, a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic array. It's, we're not going to be able, we don't anticipate to, you know, satisfy the permit or start working on the permit, you know, by May 27, 2023, without extending the construction timeframe unduly. So again, for the same reasons, due to the Eversource delay and the DU PC study, we're requesting a two-year extension. Please, I know the board might see fit to grant a one-year extension, but again, we're asking for two for the reasons expressed, which again, if you want it for the record, I can rehash it or not, you have it in your letter as well in the number three letter.
Mr. Chair, I think I have to note that I have to stand from this, so Mr. Williams would be up to bat.
I didn't start on this.
It's okay, it's an extension of a special permit and site plan, so you will be allowed to vote on this, Mr. Williams. All right. How did you get a 5-0-1?
I have a question, though, if I can get you...
I'm in the front.
Why wouldn't you just go with the two years? And if it's, they're not going to get the permit and wait to the end of the two years to start it because it's one year.
Well, we, we shouldn't be extending special permits for longer than six months to a year at good cause, and then they can come back and request it again. But more importantly is, the two-year limit is to make sure that things get started and work gets, that some amount, something happens, if you're going to come back and request an extension, you're going to have to explain why there wasn't good cause for you to gotten a reasonable amount to work done in the two years, which I think you've fairly stated in regards to what's holding you up. Now, if they're being held up again, I'm more than happy to come in and get an update on the project and find out what's going on. But leaving the town in limbo, we can't leave the town in limbo as to what's going to happen, and we wouldn't want to leave them in limbo for what they've been priorly approved to do. Any questions from the board?
Is there going to be a one-year extension, two-year extension?
The board will accept the motion for one-year extension to May 25, 2024, for the special permit and site plan review.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo, seconded by Mr. Dion. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, this is a motion to extend both the special permit and the site plan review approval, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, also one more point of order. It does expire May 27, I believe. I think you said May 25th. I don't know if it matters, but...
Oh, I did say May 25th, because that's, oh, that's when we decided it, but it wasn't certified till May 27. So I will, well, Ms. Sardillo, if you would amend your motion to extend it to May 27, 2024...
I will amend my motion to extend it to May 27, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Sardillo. Will you agree to that amendment?
I will second that.
All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Oh, that's right.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Now I'll say, "Happy Thanksgiving."
Yes. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Thank you.
Not done here yet. Planning Board, member notes, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to rule it, Mr. Glines. When we talk about planning the board member votes, we are extending that invitation to you as well to speak on any concerns or maybe process of procedures you'd like to see the board follow through. I know you mentioned on one of our subdivision plans that maybe subdivisions should have monitoring wells in regards to them, and that's something that we want to try and incorporate, especially with concerns that we heard earlier from the public. So when we talk about this, please feel free to, to speak. I know you're, I'm not going to put you on this call tonight.
Fair enough.
All right. Planning Board member notes, Chairman, we're going to, some, I want everybody to think about potential town meeting articles that they want to consider. One of the ones that I think that I would like the planning board to look at would be to bring all the affordable housing requirements in line with the transfer of development bylaw that we just passed last year, which calls for 20% as opposed to 10%, but that's something we'll, we'll discuss. But I would like to see some of our bylaws brought into alignment with our other bylaws in the best, in what, well, the citizens felt was the best interest in regards to that one. And also, I will be speaking with, I'm not entirely certain where to go with this, but to amend the stipend, because everybody here gives a lot of their time, their family time, and they do it for a good cause and their civic duty, but it shouldn't become an unreasonable financial burden to them, and the stipend should be able to cover the expenses of the individual members of boards. That will be brought up also. You should, everybody should consider there if they don't have any right now. All right, any board member votes, notes? I know you started with a "Happy Thanksgiving."
Yeah, I'd like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. This will be my last meeting for a while. As you all know, I'm undergoing back surgery. I just want to say, "Keep on keeping on, do what's best for the town of Carver, keep your personal feelings inside, and think about the best for this town and how it will progress and our future, and trying to keep taxes down and what will support that. You'll all be in my heart as I go through this whole thing, and I will be watching it on TV as soon as I am coherent." So happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Any other members' notes? I want to wish, I'll take a moment to wish Mr. Bott and his family our condolences, and our thoughts and prayers are with him. And I want to extend that our thoughts and prayers will be with you too, Ellen. It's...
Get well soon.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have minutes from 9/27/2022. Do I hear a motion in regards to approving the amended minutes?
You said November 22?
September 27, 2022.
My, I have some, some highlights on, so my concern is, are the highlights to be removed?
No, the highlights were added and after I went, I went through and read and rewatched the meeting and introduced the highlights.
Oh, okay.
So that's why it's as amended, and of course, as amended can mean they could be amended after the motion, too. Thank you, Andy. Have a good night. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
You too, Eddie.
Take care, Andy.
See you again in a couple weeks.
It's a pleasure.
Ms. Sardillo, appreciate working with you.
You as well, Andy.
She's only taking a brief respite, Andy.
Thank you. So will you approve these one at a time?
One at a time, unless, yeah, because in case people want to make changes to them or something, I think we should do it one at a time, so... The board will accept the motion to approve the minutes of 9/27/22, 2022, as amended.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gatsky. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye. The board will accept the motion to approve the minutes of October 18, 2022, as amended.
I will make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
Mr. Dion will second that.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Discussion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
We're discussing.
I didn't hear anyone speak up, it's not...
Mr. Gatsky?
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Robinson to approve the...
Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. The board will accept the motion to approve the meeting minutes of 10/25/22 as amended.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Dion, seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye. That concludes everything on my agenda, so the board will accept a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that said motion for adjournment.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo, seconded by Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all, everyone, and have a happy Thanksgiving, safe and happy.